Okay, all right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve purchasing a 2019 Honda CR-V for $24,394 from Tully.
Actually, they have destination and a couple of other fees. So it's $24,943, right? I think that's in the motion.
Okay, for $24,943 from Tully of Nashua to replace the 2022 Ford Escape. Funding to come from Drivers Education Special Revenue Fund, 91.2201.04149081500.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Animus.
Can I just clarify? Sorry, you said $24,943, right? I see a typo in the update, so thank you for catching that.
Oh, that was Mr. Glaafy.
Yep.
I was just looking at the bottom line. Like I said, I-
Yeah, the three and the nine are transposed.
Okay. Perfect.
Oh, I didn't pick that up on my motion.
Okay, so, and what's the next thing you have next?
All right, so the next one on the list is the quarterly credit card statement or credit card report. This has everything from January of '24 through July of '24.
It's mostly used for travel and such, right?
It is, yep. Most of it's for travels, some of it's for the conferences or annual memberships.
Okay.
I would say it's a mix of how we pay for it. Some of it's approved through federal grant money and some of it's through the operating. My understanding in the past is we've always shared it from a quarterly basis standpoint, more or less as an FYI and an update.
Yes, well, thank you.
Just a second.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So we've already seen everything except July, right?
I'm not sure with the transition between Dan and I if you guys truly saw the year end for the June.
Okay.
Because it is usually done on a quarterly basis and it was not available in August, which is why I brought it to you guys today.
How often is this, is this, how, do we carry this balance usually? Is this the amount that we usually carry on here?
No, right now, or at least at the end of July, it looks like it had roughly $4,000 on it. We did just get a statement in the mail. I think it had $1,200 on it.
Okay.
So kind of ebbs and flows each month. Of course, like any credit card, we pay it on a monthly basis, fully off, right?
Okay.
So I think you'll see a little bit the last half of the year and beginning of the year. It looks like what I saw from a forecasting standpoint, it seems like those are heavier purchases, but we shouldn't be carrying balances month by month over and should be paid off.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Do you need a motion for us to accept this or are we just?
I think it's, my, my understanding is it's usually informational.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Do you guys have any, do you have any questions? Okay, all right then.
All right, so if we want to jump to, let's, if you're okay with it, let's finish what's on here, the transfers, and then we'll jump to the big legal sheet. Does that work?
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Okay, perfect. So if I move over to the transfers for August, not a ton in here, but the first one I have in front of me is entry number 12. It was for Led Street, basically moving, excuse me, some money out of one of their shared instructional lines over to purchase some furniture for a new teacher that they hired. So furniture for a classroom.
Was, give me an idea what type of classroom it was or what it was that they purchased or anything? It's just-
Not positive. If you want the additional detail for it, we could. It looks like $1,100 is basically what they, 1,150 is what they put into their furniture line, not saying they're purchasing all of that out of the gate, but it looks like they were moving some funds out of the educational supply line into their furniture line. They might not have had a furniture line set up.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was looking at, I didn't know if you were adding anything, sorry?
No, I think over there there was a couple of new ELL teachers, so it just might be desks and chairs, nothing-
Oh, so it's probably like they just need another desk?
Yeah.
They didn't have one, okay, for that classroom?
Yeah, it's not a big, big dollar amount.
Okay, thanks.
So the next one is for the Nashua High School North, and this was to be able to cover some co-curricular band registration and transportation throughout the year. I think they, when we were doing the budget, they forgot to put some funding in there, so we're just moving $4,800 out of their educational supply line into regular transportation.
Oh, okay. All right, that sounds good, thanks. I don't know. I don't know how to turn it on. Maybe it's just on all the time?
It's just going to be a hot mic.
Oh, so it's on all the time? Okay then, all right.
I don't think so.
I was, been so thrown off tonight. Oh my goodness, okay, so, so the next thing is the, there's another transfer that they made, right?
Yes.
For the co-curricular band?
Yep, so same thing. It looks like they went ahead and forgot to add some funding lines for their co-curricular band. So there's one in here for $2,500 for contract services and then laundry and cleaning line for $1,200.
Okay.
I guess I just had one question.
Yep.
Is, so it's coming out of education supplies, so how much money is left in education supplies and what is that supposed to be used for going forward? Like, are we going to be like returning the money there because they just didn't have a line item or are we just not going to get education supplies in this, these amounts?
Yeah, so they should have plenty of educational supply money for sure, especially at the high school level. I would say just holistically as a whole, most of the schools don't use all of their educational supply money to the zero. You know, based off of my conversation with the team, they really should have went ahead and bucketed some of these costs in the budget season and they didn't. Last year they had some there, sounded like it was oversight on their part. So I wouldn't say there's, educational supplies is being decreased by that even though the transfer looks like it. I think their ed supplies was actually influx because they didn't have these three line items like they should have.
Let me see.
So just moving, Mr. Gray and I had a conversation as we start getting to the budget season, we'll, especially in the months that we have shorter agendas like this, that we'll talk about, what type of presentations do we need to have?
Yeah.
So these will be conversations going forward. In the past, historically, for ed supplies at all the schools, it's a formula. It's how many students do you have times X amount? And so you see some school districts saying to the building principal, you know, start at zero and give me all the ed supplies that you need for the year and itemize everything, which is crazy. It's, it's a lot. Or you say you have, the high schools have 1,600 kids, we'll give you $7 per student and this is your bottom line, and then you come up with, with that line item is. And then, as Mr. Gray said, some years we don't spend all of that money. So looking at historical data, the high school's comfortable if they move $4,000, it won't be an impact.
Okay, I, you know, I recall from the end of last year, that towards the end of the school year, we, they were buying furniture, I think, with educational supply money that they had left over? And just, just out of curiosity, are, are some schools better at managing their educational supply money than others or are there more schools that might need more money than what the current formula is allotting to them?
Short answer, yes and yes, right? So like some schools are much better at managing their ed, ed supply lines. And so they just are in a good routine of what they need to order and when. And then there's other schools where things come up where like we'll move money around and it's more the justification on why they need something different, so.
Okay.
So it's a lot of conversations with the building principals, but I also like where I hear from parents saying, I have to go buy X, Y, and Z, and then we have extra money in the ed supply lines. Like we, we might be able to provide more.
Okay.
So, so it's, it is about some building-based management as well.
And I just have one more question. So is there any rules on what you, it can be spent on? Like, you know, so these are educational supply money, it comes in the educational supply line. I know we're very particular of what comes out of each line and goes to different lines. So in this line, could we say at the end of the year, if we have enough for like a teacher, could we take the teacher's salary out of that educational supply line?
You, I mean, realistically, you shouldn't because that's a variable, right? So the variable of if you hire somebody upfront thinking that there's going to be money left over, probably not the right kind of thought process. I would say if certain schools or special education or out-of-district cost or transportation is over budget, then yes, if there's some funding left in, in supplies, educational supplies, we're able to move that money towards the tail end of the year to cover some of those other maybe expenses that weren't anticipated or came in over budget.
Thank you. Okay, oh, before we go on to the, well, before I approve the transfer report, I, I'm kind of curious about what kind of things you guys have been talking about bringing to us.
So I think, I'll kind of start and then Dr. Andre can jump in. I think for me, it's just the education to all of you folks, to the schools, to the taxpayers, right? More about the budget and the why behind it and, you know, what really goes into the budget, but also the expenses. Can we be a little bit more proactive with certain stuff? I mean, educational supplies, in my opinion, is the perfect example to say, if we're really getting into April and May, you know, if you still have funds left in, educational supplies is the right mentality, a spend-down plan. I mean, educational supplies are supposed to be used throughout the year. So I really think we have an opportunity to educate a lot of folks on, hey, how do we come up with a budget? Why are we asking the taxpayers and going to the Board of Alderman with these increases year over year? I think for me personally, I'm a hands-on learner, so it's helpful to like see the numbers but understand the why behind it too. And we'll be rolling that out to like some of the department heads and stuff too, to be able to just educate folks more on the budget and the transparency, right? Because at the end of the day, we're all one district.
Yeah.
We're all the Nashua School District, right? So it's not like it's just special education's money or technology. It, it rolls up to a bottom line. So I think education's huge to just get it out there and anything we can do to help the board or even help the teachers and the principals better, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Along those lines, also, you know, Mr. Smith was here, like there's been questions, if you think over the last four months, like it was presented during the budget, maybe it wasn't clear, so all those, you know, what does federal grants look like, special revenue, capital improvement, it could be the budget process itself, but again, it's already September and like before we know it's January.
Yeah.
And it's time for a budget, so. But we just, again, if we have time, some small presentations to answer some questions.
That would be great. I know like in talking to Mr. Donovan at some of our meetings, he has said that there's a lot more spreadsheets where things are broken down further that we don't ever see. And like I was thinking myself today before I came, one of the things that I would be, like of things I'd be interested in seeing, one of the things that I'd be interested in seeing that I don't think would be a lot to ask for is like a list of the reserve funds, the special reserve funds, a list of them, what they're for and, and how much money we have in them. And I think that'd be good for us to know, to have all those, those figures right there. And then we can maybe talk about how much we'd expect to be spending this year out of each special reserve fund. So if, if you guys could do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I think looking at some of the trends, right? So those special revenue accounts, if we, year over year, continuing to see out-of-district tuition go up, you know, if there's not enough in operating, we either need to do some of the budget transfers that you probably saw at the end of the year, or we need to go ahead and pull out of special revenue. So I almost look at it as like three or four different layers of like, how, how does all the money roll together, right? It's operating budget, it's the federal grants, it's special revenue, and how does that come together and when do you pull out of what account? I would think that potentially could be helpful to kind of have a conversation and give a presentation to it.
Okay, all right, that sounds really good.
If you have any other suggestions, recommendations, you need certain stuff, just let us know.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the transfer report from August, from fiscal year '25 August. Is that how you say it?
Pardon me?
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure how do I, how do I say from, the motion to accept transfer report from-
Do we have to do that?
From the August, motion to accept, how about motion to accept the fiscal year '25 August transfer report?
Transfer first?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you, all right.
All right, the big legal spreadsheet?
Oh, we didn't vote, I'm sorry.
I'm jumping ahead.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Okay.
Okay. So the legal report that I handed out is the fiscal year '24 year-end update. So this shows everything through the end of June. I guess just a couple like high-level items to point out. From a grant funding standpoint, we are caught up through April, but we still have May and June to bill, and we have some grants that are ending this month. So we will end up getting some additional indirect cost in for fiscal year '24, but that's the only item that's still outstanding.
Where, where is that?
So if you look at the second page and that first item, so it's 68 other expenses.
Uh huh.
So 68, 200 is your indirect cost line. So in the month of June, you can see that it was a negative 73,000, which means we brought in 73,000 of indirect costs that we billed the grant every month.
Okay.
So that number actually will go up slightly because we still need to bill for May for some of the grants and for June.
Okay. So we're always billing for grants, right? So it's kind of a rolling figure, so it never really gets to a zero or anything, it's always going to be, show kind of a balance there, right?
Yeah, so this is money that comes in to help, it's considered indirect costs, but it's supposed to help for any of, almost like the administration cost on the back end, managing the grants. So that number we usually always budget roughly 250,000 that we're going to bring in or 300,000. And, you know, we're on track to go ahead and bring in substantially more. We had a budget of 240,000 and we've already brought in over 300,000. So I anticipate that to continue to go up slightly once we get the final billing done for the grants that are closing this year.
Okay. Right, that sounds good. Let's see, where's my, I don't care.
I think it's, if there's anything that's significant, but I was, if you don't mind, if I can chime in a little bit?
Yeah, chime in, please.
Just because we were talking about.
Yeah.
So on page one, if you go down to the 6,100, supplies and materials, we were just talking about educational supplies. And so you could see we budget $1.1 million, so a little over $1.1 million in educational supplies across the district. And then you could see it's broken down over the course of the year of what months are we spending, how much. So that's where it's, the $1.1 million is actually a pretty significant investment into our educational supplies. What we shouldn't see in planning is in May and June that we're spending $221,000 in educational supplies. Like my question would be, if we still needed $221,000 in ed supplies in May and June, did you really need them for the year, right? So, so again, there might be things where it's timely. It's, you know, we're not buying, we'll pick on the high school and the horticultural classes, you're not buying spring plants, right, in September. So there are things that every month is kind of the known entities, but we don't want to be waiting until May and June if we know the students need that material in September. But we also know, and Neil, you probably know this as a classroom teacher, right? How often do we say, well, there's $100,000 left, we're going to buy this for next year? But that's a whole different fiscal year, right? You're almost paying it forward to use in last year's budget to offset this budget. So we have to get better into training or like the schools that you're purchasing what you need in the fiscal year that was approved and not for the following year, if that makes sense, right?
Yeah.
So like we shouldn't be at the end of the year saying, we have 100, you know, $18,000 that we're paying for educational supplies in June when there's 10 days of school. Like those, like if you really needed those books, right, like for the whole school year, they probably should, like that money should have been ordered in July of the previous year.
I see.
Right? Or they're like, oh, we're getting books now for next year. That should be in the next year's budget.
If, oh, go ahead, go ahead Neil.
But that's been going on, not in, like for years and years.
I was just gonna, it might, they might come to, you know, late in the year and say, hey, we got a few grand.
Yep, which is, again, when you're budgeting $1.1 million, like if you have a couple thousand dollars left because like things changed a little bit, but you, we shouldn't be saying, I'm buying furniture at the end of the year because I'm going in saying, I need furniture for this upcoming year to the taxpayers. If I don't order it until May, did I really need the furniture?
Absolutely.
Right, no, right? And so that's the leftover money that we should be coming to you saying, we forecasted at 1.1, there's going to be an extra $200,000, what's our needs assessment and then what are we purchasing at that point, so.
And I think it goes back to that educational piece, right? On like how do we be more proactive? And maybe we look at some of this in the March timeframe to say, okay, we have, you know, three months left, to Dr. Andre's point, we might have 200,000, then we come to you folks at the board and say, okay, here's almost our needs assessment, here's some of our nice-to-haves, can we take that money and spend it on some of this stuff versus continuing to purchase maybe some-
Or going into the buildings, you know? Like if every year, you know, we're doing that at the end, because that, we did talk about that at the end of this year, like why are we getting like the projectors for $4,000 or whatever when this is just spending it up, not?
And I think some of it is, you know, I know at the end of last year, we went ahead and bought some visual screeners for the nurses to have. And that was something that wasn't budgeted for last fiscal year. We had a little bit of money left over, we came, presented it, and it got approved, and the nurses are like so much happier, right? Because they don't have to contract an outside service to do all those screenings of vision. We now have the screeners that they can do it. So there's going to be some of those like one-off scenarios, but I think as we're saying, like if we can be a little bit more proactive and maybe it's earlier in the year, we're coming to you folks to say, hey, here's what we're hearing from our schools on what they need or whatnot.
Okay.
And then the other aspect, I don't want to-
No, go for it.
I'll let you go, but I just, where I look at this, especially this, this is the year end kind of report, is like the percent used, right? And so when you're looking at, you know, wages full-time 99.59, like that's a pretty accurate, like staffing-wise, or other ones that it's 148%. You like, like to me, it's like, ooh, what happened there? That's a couple of lines down, overtime regular, right? Those are the questions are, further down, 118%, 139 or 71. So from a committee's point of view, there might be questions here that might spark a conversation on why do we think some are over and some are under, so.
I actually, Dr. Andre, I actually was looking at the, the ones that were included in the packet, the reports that go through August 31st. And so I compared them to last year and I noticed there were some, some differences and I was kind of curious about that. Like for instance, this year so far, the August, well, the August overtime was $30,000, whereas last, this is line 51300, whereas last year at this time, it was only $17,000. And it's, for the percent used, the last, the last column, it's up from 8% of the money used to 11% of the money used. And so that, I thought that might be something worth asking you guys about.
Yep, I don't know if Crystal has those numbers, but my first guess is the amount of custodial work over the summer with all the school moves.
Okay.
So that's my, I know that custodians were working a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Especially at the middle school level in Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, moving materials around.
That makes sense, thank you. Let's see, there was, oh, the retirement and separation pay for August was $517,000. And at this time, last year, it was only $384,000 spent. So it made me wonder, that's, that's a difference of, is that from 46% to 66% spent? Made me wonder how many people have retired and if they were, if it's more people or if it's more people with experience or what that means for the district.
Sure. Yeah, what drives that, right? I think it's, and we can get you some specifics. What I saw with Mike and the HR team is I think it's a combination of some things. We have, we had quite a few folks even in district office that retired, that had been here for quite some time, that their separation was probably a little heftier than maybe years past. You know, we had some teachers, of course, retire, but as far as the comparison year over year, we can get more detail on that.
Okay, let me think, what else? I, I think everything else, oh, there was one other thing. This is on the, the, this is on the School General Fund Department Detail Expenditures Report. And on page one of that, the professional and technical services.
Yep.
The total percent spent so far was 28.5. And that was different than last year and I was wondering, was, I didn't know why that was.
Regan, can you give me an account number that you're looking at?
Oh, sure, sure. So it's the account number 53?
Yep.
And is it just the- And is it just the total amount I was looking at? And I was wondering if anything happened in any of these, these realms that would explain a difference, if it was pupil support services or contract services?
So, 53614, pupil support services. So, you're talking about the 35,673, 55 that's already been spent?
Yes, yeah.
Again, we can get you some pretty specific details there, but even contract service, I think with some of the more specialized positions, some of the IEP requirements, some of the special education services that we're going ahead and trying to find staffing for, we're having to contract service some of that out. And I think already this year, we've heard that, you know, there's not, there's not enough staff based on the additional IEP needs and special education needs. So, I think those numbers are going to continue to increase, and that's probably why it's ahead of last year.
Does it already look like what we budgeted for that isn't going to be enough?
I think unfortunately, yes. You know, we're in the process right now of working with the Special Education Department to be able to say, what positions are still outstanding, what are the services that we need to provide to our students, and how can we go ahead and either contract service those out and be able to move some money along? So, there is a kind of sidebar project that we're working on to try to get a better handle of it now versus, again, being a little bit more proactive versus reactive with it.
So, even with this amount of money going out, we still don't have the people that we need? Okay, so, I mean, how does that work in the special education realms right now? How are things going?
So, that's the, that's the project we're doing, like it's, again, with the staffing ratios that we're looking, how short are we, and more importantly, are we meeting the IEP needs?
Yeah.
And so, that's the data that we're asking from the Special Education Department.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, that, it really stinks that it's already something that we, it's already not working when it's only the first month of school.
I think Dan spoke about contract services at the end of last fiscal year running over.
Yeah.
And saying that it was, we couldn't fill these positions.
Yeah.
So, we have to go outside. And it was, I don't know if it was like 30% over, but I don't think this is a new problem.
Oh, no, 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 definitely not.
I, I don't think it's, I think we covered it last year, but I don't.
We were fortunate to cover, we had some ESSR funds, and then as, again, during the budget, I think we conservatively looked at about $1.5 million, a little more than that. But I think we're going to hit that number pretty quickly. So, that's going to be the larger conversation on bigger transfers, or if we projected to go over 1.5, how much over, and then what will, what will we have to transfer?
Yeah. Go ahead, Sean.
And these are like the pair of positions?
Par, mostly pair of positions.
I think just from a market standpoint, right, and Neil, you were kind of getting at this point, anytime you do a contract service, sometimes you're paying double or even triple the premium amount, right, that it potentially would cost us if we were able to hire. And I think just having a prior HR hat on and some talent acquisition experience, I think the market's tough, right? Whether it's education or elsewhere, I think, you know, we have services by law, we need to go ahead and provide these students. If we can't hire the staff because they're just not out there, then we're left to contract service them, and unfortunately, it comes at a higher premium.
So, does it look like we're on track to be around the same percent above as we were last year, or does it look right now like we're on track to be even more behind?
I almost feel like it's too early in the school year.
Okay.
To kind of look at that. I think we're being more proactive upfront, and we're already looking at it, and to your point, we're only a month into school.
Okay.
So, I think it would be tough for us to sit here and say, yeah, we're going to be drastically above. I think maybe as the next couple of months go on, and we, you know, if we continue to not be able to find that talent for whatever reason, then yeah, we're going to have to contract service them.
Okay.
And they're going to be at a higher premium.
And last year, we got a lot of the extra funds from the ESSR, right?
Correct.
And so, from this year, I know, Dr. Andre, you must already be thinking about where you're going to get that money from.
Yeah.
And do you have, have you come up with anything?
We have a couple ideas that we have in a conversation with the city.
Okay.
So, I think there's some areas that we can investigate, so hopefully we can pursue those, but I think it's kind of early in the process right now.
Okay. All right, that sounds good, something to keep an eye on, I guess. It doesn't sound good, but I'm glad we talked about it.
Well, I think going back to, you know, again, the educational piece and being almost a little bit proactive versus reactive, I think one of the other areas that we can see we spent a ton of money on last year over budget is out-of-district tuition.
Yeah.
You know, and we do have a special revenue account, and there will be a process that, if decided, we'll go through to go ahead and be able to pull some of that fund balance down to be able to use it for this year. So, some of the ideas we're looking at, working with the city.
Yeah, so there's a couple there, and just in general, there's things that if we put stuff into buckets, right?
Yeah.
Our first bucket is what are we federally required to do, right? So, in meet in the law. So, IEPs fall into that bucket.
Yes.
So, if we had to find an extra $100,000, $200,000, that's going to be a bigger priority over computer supplies, copy supplies, like we cut other lines.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make up for that. And so, it's not great, right? Like, where someone's like, oh, I thought I was going to get new uniforms, new X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Like, that money, like we will have to come to the board and say, you know, yeah, we projected or we budgeted X amount. However, if we have to provide what's federally required, that's where the money's going, so.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I hate to think of like, I, I remember I was a substitute teacher for a short time, and I always worked in the Haverhill system a little bit. And I remember being in the teacher room, and the teacher was complaining because they had, they had already gone over their paper budget for the year, like stuff like that, and, you know, or even, there, there's so many other things that we do such a good job at that I hate to think that some of that stuff is going to be cut into, but, you know.
Yep.
I guess we'll see as the year goes on. Okay. You guys have any questions? All right. All right, so, let's see now. Do we have to accept this as well, right? This is a motion to?
Yeah, I believe so, especially if it's final or year-end.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the fiscal year 25 August financial report.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I don't know. And so, is that all you guys have for us today?
That's everything. That was on the agenda and the list.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that sounds good. All right. It's a lot, it's a lot to think about. All right, but so, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, okay.
Or?
You want to make the motion and then Sean?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, 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 you guys. Motion, meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM.